And then we can come to, yes, this is Josh's last meeting. And we can come up, the ninth is the LCIP. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December eleventh, yeah, December 11th Planning Board Meeting of the City of Lewiston. My name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the chairperson. And Shannon, would you call the roll, please?
I would love to.
Roger Dupree?
Here.
Joshua Nagine?
Here.
Mr. Markot?
Present.
Shannon Cox, present. Lucy Bisson?
Present.
Amy Smith?
Here.
Lee Albert?
Here.
Alexander?
Hello.
Welcome. Okay. And because Christine Kittredge is not here this evening, Alex will be a full-voting member this evening. And, okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Shelley?
No, we don't.
Okay. And any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Then we'll start with the public hearing. Compounding Solutions LLC has submitted a development review application to construct a 35,500-square-foot warehouse on 5,059 acres.
Five hundred, five point five.
Five point five nine acres. Yeah, that makes more. Makes more sense. Sorry. Located at 12 Challenger Drive. Okay. Shelley?
So, this new warehouse building will have two loading docks, 10 parking spaces, new utilities, and stormwater features on 5.59 acres of vacant vegetated land. This parcel is adjacent to their facility at 258 Goddard Road, and the intent is to have a 24-foot driveway that connects the two. So, the new facility won't have direct access to a public street except through the existing Compounding Solutions site. The project requires new water, sewer, electric, and phone services. They will be connecting to city water and sewer on Atlantis Way and also pulling the other services from that location as well. The, excuse me, because the project is including a driveway that connects the two sites so closely, and there wouldn't be access provided to the warehouse except through the other lot, the city will require that those lots be merged. So, that's suggested as a condition of approval. Regarding parking, the light industrial use, which is what this project is, would require 39 spaces for the size of this warehouse. Our ordinance does allow the planning board to determine parking need when a project can be clearly shown to have a differing parking need, either fewer or greater than otherwise required. So, the applicant is asking the board to make a determination that the 10 spaces they're proposing are sufficient. They do have 100 spaces at their existing site. According to our requirements, they would need 89 spaces there, which leaves them in excess of 11 spaces. So, it's recommended that the board discuss with the applicant what their anticipated parking need is and the usage of that warehouse space, so you can make a determination on their request for parking need. This, the original facility at 258 Goddard Road requires site location of development review, which is administered through DEP, and the city has delegated review authority. Because this project is really kind of under the umbrella of that and expansion essentially, it requires review again under that. Staff recommends that that be a condition of approval. We have applied to DEP for their approval of our delegated review authority, but we're in line to hear back. So, we expect to be approved, but we just recommend that be a condition of approval. The project is also located in the Hartbrook Watershed, which is designated as an urban impaired stream by main DEP. And development within the watershed requires either mitigation for the new impervious surfaces or a payment of a compensation fee in lieu of onsite mitigation. The applicant appears to be wanting to do the fee in lieu of mitigation. So, it's just recommended that there be a condition of approval, that that fee be paid prior to the issuance of building permits. There was one item that we had noted in our comments that we hadn't received, and then I believe I sent an email out later on Friday to let you know that we did get the letter of financial capacity. And then also, the land was recently purchased by Compounding Solutions. So, we now have the updated deed that shows their ownership. So, both of those issues have been addressed. So, that is one suggestion. I had had five conditions of approval I was proposing. Number four is no longer necessary, so it would just be one, two, three, and five that I would recommend the board consider this evening. And then, as far as action goes, I would first suggest that the board make a determination on parking sufficiency and then take action on the application itself.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions for staff at this time? Okay. In that case, I would ask the applicant to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to tell us about the project. Please.
Good evening. Brad Mosquita with Time Bond. We've been on this site for 10, 15 years now. We did the previous expansion that was done on the Goddard Road parcel years ago that you can see off to the right of the exhibit that we presented here. This actually, this particular piece of land is a very constricted piece where you have two roads on, you've got Challenger on one side, you've got Atlantis on the other, you've got wetlands all along the Challenger side, so you really can't get there. And then, there's a gas easement going through the middle of it. So, certainly had its troubles. If you can see, this is the gas easement that comes through this cleared area here and comes down onto Challenger and crosses over. So, that being said, there's very little you can do with that land there. You can't build on top of it. You can't adjust the grade more than a few feet. So, there's a lot of restrictions on the land where it really bifurcates the property itself. That being said, with their existing facility right next door, there was, you know, an opportunity here for them to gain some additional storage space without having to cross the gas line. And you can see how we're tying into their existing circulation system on their existing building, basically just having a spur off their normal truck lane to get down here to this new building. Property itself is, you know, if we call north, straight up. High Point is up on the south side, Low Point is down on Challenger, so everything kind of flows in that direction. We've located the driveway, so that we are missing the wetlands. We do have this wetland that kind of creeps up right in this corner here, but we have avoided it. We will require retaining wall on the lower side because we are on the side of a hill, so we need to balance it out. But all we're really looking for, other than the building itself, is trucks will come down. We have a spin area, so the tractor-trailers can spin, and then back into the docks back on this corner here. Shelley alluded to a parking relief that we're requesting. We did go through the regs and I believe it was 39 spaces that were required. Talking with the client, one, they do have excess spaces up on the other parcel, but beyond that, he says, boy, we're not going to have more than four employees down here. So, he didn't really want to build it. So, we have shown 10 down here now, which he's convinced will take him, you know, 10-plus years out before he even thinks about needing more. But should the board grant that relief on the parking tonight, we did look at options that, we have this land over adjacent to Atlantis where we could put in a satellite lot if we ever needed additional parking, but certainly, it's not anticipated anytime in the near future.
Okay. Yeah, the retaining wall, your, the existing building has one heck of a retaining wall now, so.
It does.
It's, you know, it's, and it's been there for a while.
It's not flat.
And it's not fallen, so I expect the new one will be just as good. Roger?
Question. The daycare center, is that on the bottom right?
Daycare is down off the bottom left over here.
Bottom left?
Yes. It's off Atlantis.
So, Goddard Road is on the left?
Goddard Road would be right down at the bottom of the page. It's off the page.
It's downward.
Correct.
Yeah, that way.
What does Solutions do for light industrial?
They make medical tubing. So, when you're in the hospital and you see all those tubes running around, good chance they had a hand in some of that. So, it's a plastics tubing manufacturer.
Now, are they going to be doing anything with that warehouse as far as manufacturing that stuff? Or is it just?
Not at this time. At this time, it's for materials and for warehousing. At some point, you know, in the future, when they fully grow out of the bigger building up top, they talked about maybe moving some lab space or, you know, something down, but certainly, that's not, not on the docks right now. It's, they still have room up top to put a whole another line in if they need it. But again, they're looking to the future, and they're looking for a storage space.
So, basically, the 10 spots, parking spots are for people working in that warehouse?
A couple of people work in the warehouse, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alex?
What's the existing load on the existing lot for the rest of the, for the rest of the business? Does the parking lot already fill up, or is it underutilized?
No, actually, we have excess up there now.
Yeah.
There's two different things you look at, right? It's what your ordinance says, which we meet and exceed, and then what's reality.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, being up there, and I've been up here several times, you know, meeting with them, and there's always a dozen or two.
Okay.
When I've been there, there's been plenty of spaces.
Okay. Anyone else? Shannon?
Thanks. That was a large part of my question. If there's 100 spots and the ordinance says that we already have an extra 11 at the top of the hill.
Correct.
We're adding the 10 at the bottom. It gets us to 21 total between there, because we can assume for all intents and purposes that your approval today is contingent upon the merger of those two. So, then that parcel would have enough parking for both, or 22 instead of the 39. Our ordinances ask for too much parking, quite frankly, and quite often, and so it's helpful to hear that you have additional.
That was our discussion with the client. We said, you know, we can put it in. One, you don't want to pay for it. And two, by the time you actually need it, it could already start to be deteriorating because it's been sitting out there for a dozen years.
Well, and it's not great policy to.
Pave the road.
Require additional impervious and/or petroleum-based products to be spread around for no reason. So.
Right.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Alex?
And I just wanted to note it for the record, there is a transit stop within, you know, 100 feet, at least according to Google, there is.
Google.
And it looks like there is some sort of pedestrian facility to get over there. It's at the corner of Apple Road and the Parkway. So, there's also sufficient access for folks not to take their car, so you don't need the parking.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Yes, Michael?
Fire protection. Seeing how it's tucked in behind and there's only one ingress, egress, has that been given any consideration?
Your fire department has reviewed.
Yeah, the fire department said they had no comments.
And that one little, looks like a throat coming in and out, is ample enough?
You're talking right here?
Yes.
Yes. That's a width of a normal city street, so you've got 24 feet.
Two, two length?
Yes.
Okay.
And plenty, and we can turn a tractor-trailer around down in the bottom, so they have ample room to maneuver.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. In that time, in that case, this is a public hearing. So, I will open it up to the public. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this project, would you please step up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes. Someone will have to, because I don't have my phone.
I got you.
And so, I'm opening it up to the public. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this project? Seeing none, I will close it to the public, bring it back to the board, and either if you have any, no more questions, you have a question, Alex.
My question.
Sure.
The bit of pavement on the north side of the building, is that the truck turnaround, or is that, what is that for?
The truck turnaround, you see how this is curved out here?
Yeah.
So, that's basically where a truck can come down, spin around, and then back into the dock.
Yeah.
We provided this as some relief for the fire department, to give them access around that full side should they want it.
Oh, okay.
That was the only, that was the sole reason for that.
Dragging hoses.
Got it.
Exactly.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion when we have two motions that need to be made.
It seems as though we had consensus on agreeing that there was enough parking.
Oh, here it is.
I made the motion. Okay. I'd like to make a determination under the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 12, Section 17, Off-Street Parking and Loading, that the application submitted by Compounding Solutions LLC for a 35,500-square-foot warehouse with 10 parking spaces has sufficient parking based on the applicant's planned use of the site.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Take your pick. And any further discussion? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagine?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
And Lucy Bisson, yes. Second.
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by Compounding Solutions LLC for a 35,500-square-foot warehouse located at 12 Challenger Drive meets all the necessary criteria contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions: that prior to the issuance of any building permits, the main DEP would sign off on the city's delegated review authority for the Site Location of Development Act, SLOTA; that prior to the issuance of a building permit, 12 Challenger Drive and 258 Goddard Road be merged; that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the Hartbrook Watershed Urban Impaired Stream impact fee shall be paid; that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all stormwater and site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagine?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Excuse me. Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. All righty. Well, good luck with the project.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay. Other business. A discussion on the development of apartments at 61 Ash Street with Lewiston Housing Authority. And, okay. Yeah.
Warms my heart.
Just wanted to call it out in case you hadn't gotten there yet.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I was just staring.
I thought Alex ran off the bat.
I did, too.
Landau, bike room.
Yeah, yeah. Inside bike storage. Alex will be happy.
Couple of Lizzas for one bike.
Not true, not true. It looked like a good sign.
Gentlemen, if you would, you know, identify yourselves and then be sure you speak in the mic, because this is recorded and we need it for, thank you.
Yeah. My name is Silas Levitt, and I'm the Development Project Manager with Lewiston Housing Authority.
Jesse Thompson, Kaplan Thompson Architects.
Craig Sattlemeyer and I serve on the Board of the Lewiston Auburn Area Housing Development Corporation.
All righty. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Board, thank you for speaking with us today. We're here to talk about future plans for the current 61 Ash Street parking lot. As you know, LHA/Lahatic owns the majority of the block between Ash, Pine, Park, and Bates Streets. The portion of the block alongside Pine Street is already slated for development with the DeWitt Project, which is part of Choice, but we have long considered the rest of the block suitable for mixed-use development and mixed-income housing, and we're starting to begin that development process. We consider the possibilities afforded us by 61 Ash, 104 Park, and the other lots on the block a kind of Choice 2.0, and we wanted to ensure public participation in the development of the planned units on site. So, our project goals are as follows. We kind of, we want to expand redevelopment of the block, starting with 61 Ash Street as Phase 1, and eventually adding additional housing and commercial space above and behind 104 Park Street. We want to create more needed mixed-income housing. We want to maximize use of the site for mixed-use community benefit, and we want to meet the goals from the Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan. So, I'm going to pass it over to Craig here to discuss more about the specific transformation plan goals.
And a little bit more context about my role on Lahatic. I was appointed to Lahatic by Healthy Neighborhoods through my work with Choice and when I was serving on the Board of Healthy Neighborhoods at the time to sort of represent, you know, community view and interest with regards to projects taking place. So, we want to just highlight goals from the Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan that this project is meeting in addition to the general mission of our organization. So, goal 2.1 to 2.3, gateway beautification and safety, and also within goal 2.3, walkability and traffic calming. So, and I think it's worth pointing out that this is, you know, right now, this is a skinny sidewalk next to a very large windswept surface parking lot. It's a very necessary path for a lot of people to walk. It's not necessarily the most enjoyable, and I think this is an opportunity to make it a much more pedestrian-friendly and attractive gateway to the downtown commercial area. We all know a lot of folks are using Ash Street to get through there. That intersection of Ash and Bates is actually a high-crash location. And in addition to what can be done within the bounds of this private property to make it both more attractive, more walkable, and traffic calming, because when we add, you know, buildings of any height, but at the proposed height, the ratio of that to the existing streetscape is a traffic calming measure in and of itself. But I think it's also an opportunity for the city to consider how that intersection could be made more safe as well. It's been studied before. There have been suggestions. The city's always been a little hesitant to implement them. So, anyway, I think it's just worth the city considering how those changes could happen in conjunction with a project such as this. Continuing on goal four, grow an inventory of new healthy housing, of course. It fits right into what the plan proposes for land use and developing mixed-use commercial corridors. It fits into the plan of smart growth as we're, you know, taking a highly underutilized urban lot and getting a lot of value out of it, both in terms of housing and commercial needs and employment opportunities. We're adding more green space to something that's right now almost completely paved parking area. And it creates the opportunity goal 9.6 to grow local business opportunities and, again, create mixed-use spaces near Lisbon Street and along Ash. And so, a little bit more, I'll start, I'll speak to some of the first points here on the planning timeline. So, again, this is, we see this very much as meeting a lot of the transformation plan goals. We're not trying to, the transformation plan is already done, so we're not reinventing the plan itself, but we are doing some additional public process around this development above and beyond what is normally required of a development. So, between now and March, beginning with this meeting, we're going to hold a series of meetings, public meetings as well as focused stakeholder meetings. So, we're beginning with this, this meeting tonight with the Planning Board. In January, we hope to present, do a similar presentation to the city council to get their reactions to the conceptual idea for the project. In February, we're going to be doing stakeholder focus groups, so with downtown businesses, with downtown residents. In late February, we hope to hold a final public meeting that reflects the, you know, what we heard during those meetings. And then, the, really, the design process begins in March, and I'll actually hand it over to Silas to speak to the final points of the process.
Yeah. So, after we move through the public participation schedule Craig discussed, we're going to enter into the more traditional development review process with the goal of presenting before the Planning Board as part of the development review in May and June with the intention of submitting a pre-app to Main Housing for a 9% light tech application. Following that, depending on the scoring and how the pro forma looks, we'll either continue with the 9% pre-app full application in September, or do what the DeWitt Project did and submit a 4% light tech application in December. All right, moving on. So, this is the existing site. The zoning is part of the Central District, but as we've mentioned, it's only currently used for service parking. In terms of the sort of expanded uses on the block, the 104 Park rear site in the middle, so this one right here, is currently used as a kind of a warehouse distribution space by Bags LLC. Furthermore, in the relatively near future, LHA is planning on moving our administrative offices plus additional tenants like Colab and Goodwill to the vacant Sun Journal Building at 104 Park Streets. So, we're really seeing this area as a space for kind of commercial and mixed-use development, and then we want to continue to build and develop housing on top of it. I also just wanted to note generally that this phase will not impact Bags LLC, but we're planning to include them in future phases of the development. The goal of this project is definitely housing plus and not housing alone.
Excuse me. The shaded blue area is your building?
That's correct. This is the current parking lot at 61 Ash, so the building would go into this lot.
Thank you.
So, this slide shows our overall kind of housing goals for the site, although the Phase 1 development of 61 Ash Street is mostly what we're here to talk to you about. Phase 1 would contain between 64 and 72 units. In a few moments, Jesse's going to present several different scenarios to you along with our preference going forward, but the scenarios range between, you know, a senior building and then a building for, that's aimed at families, and a building that's aimed at single adults. And these would all be mixed-income units, looking at a ratio of 80% light tech and 20% market rate.
Okay. Silas. Yeah, so I think we'll start just by the general, since this is a goal of starting a meeting with building awareness to the board of what some of the possibility is here. This isn't yet a project. It's much more sort of, as we all start and start this community conversation, some of the building blocks which we wanted to show and build upon are shown here. So, before we get into the actual how the building works, just want to talk a little bit. To the left, that brown square is the federal post office, and so the federal government owns that top left-hand corner, and they have a decent amount of trucking that comes in. That little skinny thing is a link where they all load in and out. And this project needs to maintain access for them to continue to use their facility. And it's also trying to maintain use for the current use of the old Sun Journal site in the middle, which Bags Inc. is using and is using for various uses. And the next piece of what we've done is we've tried to do good downtown design. I think it's trying to reflect some of the lessons learned from DeWitt and thinking of Ash as the commercial street and Bates as a more quieter, more residential street, and seeing Ash Street as the sort of, you know, these, like Pine, the road that connects to Lisbon is the more commercial core. And so, all of our schemes try to take a building and rebuild that urban line that we assumed were buildings there 100 years ago, doing probably something similar to what we're showing here, and to rebuild on those historic patterns of Lewiston. And so, every scheme tries to build privacy on the back and a public face on the front. Every scheme says if you live here and it's your home and your apartment, you're coming in and out of Bates Street. And if you, if there's a business on the ground floor, it's coming in and off Ash Street. All of them are trying to not put apartments onto Ash and Bates on the ground floor. They're all doing other uses along Ash and Bates, so that you're, if you live here, you don't, you're not living on a sidewalk right there. We are, in general, so if there is our apartments on the ground floor, they're on what we call the backside. And we're trying to build a little bit of green space, private green space on the backside as well, so a place to have a picnic, birthday parties with your kids if the weather's good. And the sunny side, the south side, is that, you know, down on the. And the sunny side, the south side, is that, you know, down on the, down page, so that we do think that will also be the sunniest spot. And as use changes over the next decades, perhaps Bags Inc. relocates, hopefully it's inside this building, that we won't, might not need as much parking in the future, that can be redeveloped in the landscape. I think there's a general long-term goal, it's not part of this project, it's not a future, but maybe there's a possibility to connect to the park, through the middle of this block eventually. That's, you know, a long way off, but we want to not prevent it from happening, even if it, this project doesn't do it itself. So that is just sort of general goals which we've all stated, which all the schemes take building and push it along Ash and Bates, and then have the heart of the block reserved for green space, maybe future buildings, future uses, residential uses, but sort of follow those rules. So that is the general, how we've started. We'll take comments and feedback on that. I think that there's a goal of increasing street trees, making better sidewalks, all those things are part of the goal of the project, but, you know, we aren't, we aren't doing that yet. This is just a, what a building could be here.
Right. Yes, Josh?
Just out of curiosity, I believe the DeWitt model actually left a courtyard that did open up into the back there. Is there any consideration as far as like the design in order to be compatible? Because we're talking about, obviously, Choice 2.0, Choice 2.1's not done yet, so, or actually not even broken ground on in that space. So I'm just wondering if there's continuity between the overlays?
Yeah, you're, you're seeing gestures towards that. So the DeWitt project has that open space right on the park, centered on the park, and there's a utility corridor, so there's sort of practical reasons, but there also is, you know, this used to be a walking path and a road, and that's why we have held that orange box away from the red line, which is the property line. So if you were to zoom out, you would kind of see, maybe in the future that could be made. And again, sort of, yeah, not preventing, but also it's not, you know, there is a large building there right now that is being used.
So it's not necessarily a thoroughfare?
It is not, yeah.
But definitely?
Could be.
... for people from one space to another to travel.
Yeah, absolutely. We expect most folks would walk on the sidewalk around, you know, it's like you probably wouldn't weave your way through parking lots, and those buildings are connected. The old 104 Park brick building is connected to the old printing press building, and it is, you know.
But if I was living in the building?
Yeah. You might, yeah, you might walk through the back, and then there's an apartment building in between DeWitt and this proposed site that exists, that's a different property owner. That won't change, but hopefully the property around them will get better.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Oh, I was going to say, first staff, does the city still maintain right-of-way for where Middle Street went through? Looking at some of the maps, it is still labeled as a stub, is that still?
I don't know.
Possibility for private right-of-way?
The surveys don't show, you know, it's not a paper street.
I think it was, it was abandoned because, so that the Sun Journal could build a building, otherwise they, they couldn't have built the building.
Yeah, no, just funny things had happened. And then, just a clarifying question, we're looking at different scenarios, and they're all very much like, this is senior housing, this is housing with families, there isn't a chance to have those be mixed, so that you can have families and seniors, or is that sort of a funding constraint?
I mean, the issue is that the points available on the light tech application for main housing, so if we're doing seniors, it makes sense to do all seniors. For the multifamily option that has one, twos, and three bedrooms, that's obviously all multifamily. Jesse, we'll get to this, but our preferred option is actually a building that's ones and two units, which isn't specifically for seniors, would be intended more for single adults and smaller families, but certainly seniors could live in that building, there wouldn't be anything preventing them.
Yeah, I was going to say, Jesse, based on your comment of, you know, you're replacing sort of the streetscape that maybe was there, probably those buildings were smaller, and so just more diversity in terms of the people living there. So concern about larger developments like this is sometimes they can end up being very uniform, and then you don't get the richness that you have with a city center with everyone living together.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, and I think that question gets right to, why did we develop some of these things? Well, everyone is watching all of the other buildings under construction in Lewiston of various forms, and so Wedgwood is satisfying a lot of large family apartments, and so the Wedgwood, once Wedgwood is built, there will be a bunch of large family apartment, I think there's a feeling of, there's not the need to do that again here. Once DeWitt is built, there's a lot of ones and two bedrooms, there'll be a certain need that satisfied, the Martell School, if that's rebuilt, there'll be another need. So I think as everyone was looking at what the, we wanted to look at a range, the way the main housing support is structured, the, if it is labeled a senior housing building, you end up with a lot of one bedrooms. And what we saw was, that was the highest number of houses, of apartments that could be built here. You could get up to 72, because they're smaller.
Right.
You can fit more of them. Simple math. Because we're looking at a five-story building, we probably, you know, there's not the constructability to go larger than that, and DeWitt is a similar scale, so it's felt good to test that right away. And so maybe, Silas, if we go to the next slide, we'll see, the blue shade on this is various rooms. What you're looking at on the top, along Ash Street, that, that kind of blue blob that wanders its way across, is 8,000 square feet of commercial space. That could be retail, that could be municipal space, could be office space, it's some non-residential use, and that's what we're showing as a possibility along that edge, and it could be entered from Ash Street, it could also, you could come around from the back. But that's what we are programming along Ash Street in this first scheme. And then the things to the right are things like trash room, bike room, mechanical, that orange space that goes onto the green space in the back is a community room for this building. The lobby is labeled in orange, there's an elevator and stairs in there as well, but this is kind of one of those ground floor layouts in this scheme. And if we go up one more page, you'd see on the, is it?
Do I have a second?
Yeah, no, let's keep going further. This is a second scheme, which this is one which tested one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedrooms apartments, and this is a, that's designed for the maximum family points for main housing, and that got us about 64 apartments, which is, you know, a decent drop from 72. And to get to this number, because of the larger apartments, we had to put some apartments on the ground floor. Is that the next slide? It is, yeah. So those red boxes show apartments on the ground floor, they're on green space, they're in the back of the building, they're, they're private. But we did, just to get to 64, we had to put some apartments on the ground floor. And so the commercial space went down to 4,000 square feet on this scheme. And so when, you know, this was, we were looking at both of these, it was probably very competitive on the way they structured their points. And so actually, let's see, guys, Silas, let's go back, yeah, this next one is probably better. Then we looked at one, which I think honestly is Lewiston Housing's favored scheme, which was the goal of trying to get more commercial space on the ground floor. It's good, it's good for the city, it's good, you know, there's a lot of goals of business development in the city right now. And what we were able to do was if we dropped the three bedrooms and said, okay, Wedgwood's going to satisfy a lot of need for threes and four bedrooms, here we could do a mix of ones and twos on this site, we could probably increase the commercial space and still get up to, I think, 68 apartments, which felt like a good number. And it felt like a good middle ground that hit the, the business goals of the city, and also to provide good housing on the site. And so that layout of that third scheme was, I think, where we got to feeling like that was maybe the best balance for this place. And that's, I think, the B2 scheme we're talking about. But honestly, you know, in terms of design, I think this is at a level we wanted to, again, this is the beginning of a discussion with the board. It's going to be a public process through a series of months, and it will evolve. Like all schemes, it has to do a test of design, and then it has to have a financial test. That financial test will cascade back, and we'll come back to you and say, well, we learned this, we have to do something like this. You know, I think looking for tenants that can fill that space is obviously a great, that will be a big financial driver. I think the project hopeful that that will actually help the project's finances, so, but I think, anything else? Is that, that's most of what we had discussed in terms of design, I think.
Okay. So Alex, you have a question?
Just really quick, does this site have the same grade challenges that the DeWitt project has? And I'm asking that in terms of how, you know, when I see a big commercial space like that, a lot of opportunity, but also very daunting, but having big commercial space that can be little commercial space or big is great, but if you have the height difference, you can't have doors, you can't have ramps inside the building, it starts to make problems. So does it have the same height differential, or not as much?
Well, I think it, the height difference is a little less than down on Pine, but it does still slope towards the river. And I think at this stage, what we know is we could make a single retail space work, and we can make multiples work. So we could pick a direction and go to smaller retail spaces if that proved to be the demand. You'd have multiple doors, and they wouldn't link to each other. And I think that maybe will evolve as there is conversations with future tenants. So I think that we're trying at this stage to build in flexibility, maybe it's a set of smaller tenants, or maybe there's one great tenant that wants all 8,000 square feet, I think. We're trying to hold flexibility.
Roger.
Can you explain what the parking is going to be for these people?
Yeah, there's some car parking located in the back behind the building, especially accessible car parking spaces, and then there, the plan is to use other municipal car parking spaces around for the majority of the rest of the need. But we do have a series of onsite car parking spaces that are labeled with those little boxes with small numbers in them around the back.
It's directly across from the parking garage on Park Street.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the goal, is that municipal parking garage.
On Ash Street is where the retail is going to be, right?
Yeah.
Facing it, what's the parking facility on that?
The, the hope is we can rebuild on-street parking also, so have good on-street, like drop, jump in, go quickly to retail and back, and then some of that parking in the back could be reserved for retail staff who are working. That was the hope.
Lee?
Sure. So just a comment and a question. In terms of a comment, I appreciated you explaining the different scenarios and the one-to-two bedroom split. Appreciate thinking about the other developments, and this will probably come out in focus groups, I would imagine, but just thinking the future needs, as we know, the generational shifts that are ebbing and flowing through the city and the community, so where will we be 40 years from now? I know senior housing is of utmost concern right now, but 20, 30, 40, I'm sure it's on your radars, but just wanted to flag that. And then, can you confirm, so would that B2, it's how much retail space? Is it back to the full 8,000?
Yeah, so scenario B2, or the 68 units would be back to 8,000 square feet commercial.
Okay, Josh?
Just as a couple of comments, you know, ultimately, I think all of the types of housing that are proposed are needed, so, so I don't really see much of an issue there. And the rebuilding of Lisbon Street, I mean, of Ash Street and that section, you know, I think that it may hold more of a challenge than you expect, but it would be absolutely excellent to see the width of that road decrease, and at least some street parking exist there with a better, either buffered or, or healthy walking corridor. So, you know, I, I think, as Lee mentioned, that, as, remember, I would imagine, that a lot of this will probably come out in spoken groups, so that you can really determine what you're aiming for in order for the need, but it looks good to me, so.
Shannon?
It's two parts. One, can you bring me back to your timeline slide?
Yeah.
Some of this is for you, and some of this is for Shelley. So in here, we'll be reviewing, in the same month that you're presenting to City Council, and then through your stakeholder groups, we'll be reviewing and finalizing the capital improvement plan for the city in conjunction with City Council. And the timeline by which that is reviewed and implemented will impact dollars spent starting July 1st. So I offer that because Public Works tends to give a pretty detailed five-year plan of both streetscape, sidewalk, and green space improvements, and if what you're hearing in focus groups comes back to us, or to City Council in like May or June, you've blown the opportunity to have your construction phase informed by streetscape changes. So if you're hearing some early things from your focus groups, I'd encourage you to kind of flag, or if you are testing a couple of hopeful or assumed kind of streetscape changes that would benefit the whole feel, kind of à la comprehensive plan and growing our tree streets transformation plan, it'd be great for staff and maybe even for the Planning Board, or even City Council, when you present to them, to include some of what might be really complementary, and how that benefits both commercial investments and housing and walkability and livability, because I think that, that council will be really capable and excited to hear that. The other piece is, it would, I will be looking for our Public Works report to speak to any planned improvements in the kind of sixth-street area that we're already targeting for development and investments, and so if you want to, as, as different departments are getting that ready, if you want to let Mary Ann know, so that she's not surprised when we ask for detailed thoughts on some of those addresses, that'd be useful for everybody.
And that's January and February is the time when they start building that plan?
Well, they're building it now.
Yeah, they're building it now.
But that's the opportunity to improve it, or to ask questions. And so just not letting best-laid plans and good process leave you in a position where your outcomes, oh, we paved that in July, sorry about your timeline, and that happens.
Right, yeah, I mean, I can certainly reach out to Mary Ann and share with her our kind of design and general proposal, and make sure that that gets included somewhere in the Public Works plan.
Yeah, just thinking about it.
That's good, that's good. Does anybody else have any que, I think it's, it's fantastic, I think it's, it's time that we rebuilt that area, and I think five stories will be fine. I mean, you look at the telephone, the old telephone building across the street, that's about five stories tall, and, and it'll mix with the DeWitt project right behind, and I'm looking forward to, I, I plan to keep the, the little scenarios, three scenarios you have for future reference, and, and looking forward to what you guys come up with. Yeah, Amy, I'm sorry.
I just had one question. How much commercial space is going to be in DeWitt? Do we know? It just feels like there's a lot of ground floor, new ground floor commercial planned for that area, and we've got an awful lot of vacant ground floor commercial right now, so I'm just curious about that.
Isn't, isn't at least one of the spaces what was supposed to be the grocery store 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, that's, in DeWitt, there's about a 10,000 square foot contiguous space that had.
And then there was another one on, in the other building.
And there were three smaller spaces in that, perhaps 2,000 to 3,000 square foot that are much more sort of smaller business scale, so that's probably the total size, Amy, of the size going in.
I mean, I love the idea of ground floor commercial, I just don't know how realistic I get, realistic it is to actually get.
Another 8,500 square feet, yeah, that's a lot of.
I think everyone's hope is that when there are several hundred people living at DeWitt, there are several hundred more customers. So that's, hopefully that is the acceleration that builds of several hundred more customers, and more customers in the Wedgwood neighborhood start building demand so those businesses can survive better.
Right.
And that sort of healthy flywheel starts, really starts up again.
Mm-hmm. Alex?
Yeah, I think this really underscores needing to make sure that that commercial space is very flexible, and that, you know, it doesn't end up being three small units that can only ever be three small units, or one big unit that can only ever be one big unit.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think flexibility is, is the word.
The other quick comment I had is, you know, we're talking about Bates Street being more residential, sort of, you know, quieter. Anecdotally, right now, as someone who sort of bikes by it a lot, it tends to have a lot of traffic on it. And I think, and I wonder if having the sort of utility rooms off to the side there and facing Bates, sort of is going to continue to keep that street as sort of just like a thoroughfare, kind of, you know, treating it more of an alley than an actual spot. You know, I know the entrance for the housing side of the building is there as well, but I, I just wonder if there's maybe something programmatically that can be done to better engage the street, so it isn't, you know, frosted windows, or no windows for all the utility rooms. Maybe you put the bike storage over there, so you can get bike, bikes in right off the street or something.
Right. Shannon? You sure?
I didn't hear you explicitly ask about feedback related to your three scenarios, but you did present it in such a way that it seemed like you were shopping the idea around.
Well, I, we actually did not get to all the slides, so there, there are slides further down where we deliberately solicit feedback from you guys, but it.
Do you like to go to that? Do you like to go to that slide?
I mean, it's like we're having a good conversation, so I didn't, I didn't want to slow it down.
We can stop the feedback.
But there, yeah, there are, there are slides further down. There's one where I talked specifically about the commercial space. So obviously we would prefer the larger commercial space. We're aiming for about $10 per square foot on rent, which is what we're going to carry in, in the pro forma.
Can I ask a quick question while you're on that slide?
Yeah.
White box fit out means electrical and bare walls, but not plumbing historically in this community? I will just let you know that the lack of plumbing is what has allowed larger spaces to not be flexible and keep it vacant.
That's a good, a good note to have.
Plumbing, plumbing is, should be included in your white box because people are going to need to pee and wash their hands no matter where you put them or how many ways you break that up.
You want the money to have plumbing included, but you don't want to put it in because they all want different plumbing.
Yeah, yeah. Even just the basics that allow the stuff under the ground, like your basic sewer water hookups.
You don't know where they are.
Just saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's certainly something we can look at in the further design scenarios. One of the things we're going to be doing at further meetings is, you know, soliciting ideas people might have for tenants to go in that space we can talk to. It would be great if we could get a tenant involved early on in the process because then they can design out their space more. But we're going to default to the white box fit out, possibly with plumbing additions unless we can identify a tenant.
Right. Yeah, and when you get to the apartments, I mean, we have discussed it with Martel and we've discussed it, and you guys have been in, in meetings where we've discussed other apartments of what we think, you know, really needs to be on, you know, like a trash room on each, on each floor or a chute or something so that, you know, if you've got seniors or, or a mother with little babies, she doesn't want to have to go down the elevator to go throw her bag of trash into the trash room. You know, we, we need to be, and washer dryers and dishwashers and we'll, we'll discuss those in further detail when you come up with it.
Those are definitely all things we're cognizant of. So as we start to fill out the design, we'll start to include those amenities and, and make sure that we're soliciting from people to get the types of amenities they're looking for in the points.
Good, good.
So you are soliciting? Nope, because I'd love to provide feedback on the scenarios and I'm looking for the right space to do that and encouraging my peers to join that conversation.
All right.
Absolutely.
So here's our, our discussion and input slides. You know, we're looking for feedback on a broad range of things from the scenarios to the, the site design. Any thoughts on sort of long-term future phases? So this is, this is the spot for those types of inputs.
Josh?
The one thing that I was going to mention-
You want to speak in your microphone, please, Josh?
The one thing I was, I would like to mention, which is, is a feedback concerning the commercial spaces. We've, in the past, developed commercial spaces as kind of a box, one door, right? It's like, here's your commercial space, have fun. And in that space, just consider when it's being developed, right? The flexibility of like, for instance, are you going to have people, if it's, if it's a furniture store or, or, or a, a local supermarket, right? Are people going to unload tractor trailer trucks on Lisbon Street? Are you going to have access in order to get things into the spaces? And that's, again, it comes back to those flexibility pieces, but I think it's, it's super important to think about what it could be versus just like one door with an open, you know.
Roger.
When you're looking at walkability between your project and DeWitt, what's the lighting going to be like? Is there going to be lighting available to light up that area?
And whose responsibility is it? Because it crosses four different parcels?
Correct.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from anybody?
Still looking to talk about the housing scenarios.
Yeah, okay. Do you, do we want to discuss? I mean, is it too much detail at this point?
I don't think so. You have three, right? Scenarios? Okay. One is senior housing, lots of little units, big commercial space. One is a mix of units that includes one, two, three, and four, reduces commercial to four. And then the last is your preference and is one or two-bedroom units that provides 8,000 square feet of commercial. How'd I do? Great, thanks. So I'm concerned with it being senior housing or senior housing explicitly. And I think that the way in which you're funding resources would require you to name it as a senior housing, right? That, that's a whole different scenario to what a senior thinks they're getting into than when a senior knowingly has an active lifestyle, wants to live in a vibrant, diverse space and be close to their coffee shop and physical therapist and all the other beautiful amenities that this location provides, which is very different than somebody who likes their peace and quiet finding out that they've got toddlers upstairs. And we've seen some of those kind of interpersonal issues with some of the mixed developments that we've had. So I love the idea of scenario three providing the flexibility of one and two-bedroom units and that seniors can find their way into it without it being restrictive of anyone outside of the senior population. And likewise, and I think that this is part of what Lee was alluding to, I think the larger, the larger number of bedroom units inventory has increased and our current pipeline will increase it at exactly the same time that the next generation is having smaller families. And so I don't feel strongly that scenario two is a necessary piece because the need is being met in other spaces. And lastly, while scenario three is my favorite, I would strongly think about the way in which, not just the flexibility of the commercial space, but you, we're going to have a little bit of an economic recovery timeframe, like three to seven years economic recovery timeframe. That was true anyway, and it's been exemplified by recent activities. And so smaller spaces that require smaller startup and that really leverage the additional population growth that's just happening up the hill and that's happening on this site and just across from this site, really looks a lot more like coffee shops and ice cream and hair parlors and maybe a small boutique, but a lot of like service-based, smaller commercial businesses than some of the larger ones, unless we could get for sure a grocery store in there that was, you know, locally and maybe even cooperatively owned, that'd be awesome too, in which case you should definitely have a bigger space.
Right. Josh?
Just-
Microphone?
One point about the, because I don't know if it was brought up at all, but the wiring for Wi-Fi and also central, not heat, but, but central cooling, this is becoming more and more of a, of a thing that, it's just hotter. And, and ultimately, like when we develop a building and we don't think about the fact that we're going to be hanging air conditioners over Lisbon Street, for instance, you know, just that piece. So.
Yep. Lee?
Sure, so just to be clear, my inquiring about scenario two was, I'm in favor of scenario two for what it's worth. Also, just wanted to ask, and forgive me if I missed this, so 8,000 square feet commercial, is there also municipal accounted for or could that be divvied up in a way that it has community space? So say it's 6,000 commercial, 2,000 community.
Yeah, that's something we could certainly look at doing. It depends on how the pro forma works out, if we need the rent from the commercial space or not. We might be able to have the, the 2,000 square foot community space fit in fine. Yeah, that's something, definitely something we can consider moving forward.
Yeah, great. I too prefer the one and two-bedroom apartments. I think Wedgewood is, is probably going to give us the larger apartments and as Lee was saying, and, and Shanna, you know, families are getting smaller, not necessarily larger. And I think we need to look, because this is not going to be for another couple of years. So by the time this is, you know, truly being developed, it, I think that would be more the size apartments we're looking for. And I also agree with Shanna that, you know, we need senior housing, but we also need places where active seniors who are not doddering and that, that want to be in a mixed development that maybe doesn't, don't mind if there are toddlers next door or above, upstairs. And so I, I think that's probably the, the best scenario. Alex, last question.
Yeah, more of a comment. So having, I think to Shanna's point, like having commercial space that is really easy for turnkey, you know, starter business, you know, one of the, I think one of the big struggles that we have here in Lewiston is that this city grew over time to be the second largest city in the state. And then population decline, economic activity declined. So we have no shortage of large spaces that can be supported by vibrant, strong economies. Once they're there, what we are missing is the little spaces that allow folks to grow. And to the question of plumbing, you know, if, if we're looking at businesses that are not food or, you know, anything that would require sink, having like a communal bathroom that's available by hallway could really make a big difference in making this more accessible for folks. Like, you know, I, I'm almost inclined, like I like the one and two-bedroom apartment option. I also like having smaller commercial space, intentionally smaller commercial space, more street frontage, less depth, more emphasis on shared plumbing, you know, you can get your hair salon and if you need, you know, plumbing for sinks, that's going to be really easy. You're not jackhammering up concrete to put in a block of toilets or put in something for a restaurant. There's other spaces that can, that can do that.
Can I add to that?
Sure. I know you said it was the last question. Thanks. I work with a lot of businesses and the clients that are going to get in and rent your commercial spaces and give you the cash flow you need instead of the square footage that gives you the cash flow you never get because you don't rent it. And that's the reality, is that the biggest capital expenses for the businesses that would fit in there are smaller businesses that are just starting. And the more capital for the build-out that you require, the harder it is for them to get financing, the harder it is for them to make the, the lease contract signature happen, let alone the rest of the pieces. And so if you think about it in terms of those barriers to getting people out of their homes and into bricks and mortars, which is like a transition that's actively happening anyway, you can capitalize on that. But working capital for a, a business that's in its first two or three years is the biggest pinch. And when you think about the build-out, that's the biggest ask that you put on them. And so when I say plumbing, it's, it's capital, you know?
Okay, all right. I think we have given you a number of items to think about and to work with and-
See you next year.
Yeah, see you next year.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right, good luck, guys.
Have a good rest of December.
Sounds promising. Okay. The next item on Other Businesses is the Planning Board making a recommendation to the, on the disposition of the police station, including 171 Park, 308, 324, and 294 Lisbon Street. Craig?
Good evening. These are, I have, I've got it tapped up already. These four lots are approximately one acre. The total value of the land in the buildings are assessed at $2,000,501,800.
Will you squeeze to the, your left for a second so that all of our applicants can get in next to you? Shelley, will you just squeeze that way? Just pull your chair. You can still drive, it's good. Thanks.
Sorry about that, Craig.
No, no problem, no problem.
Just repeat what you were saying, please.
Sure. So as you can see here, these four lots, this is the police station and the surrounding area. It is approximately one acre. Assess value of the land and buildings is approximately $2.5 million. The building, however, has been deemed to be distressed, non-suitable for rehab for a police station. They are planning to move out sometime next year. There is a, or there has been a request made by the Lewiston Auburn Community Market for an 18-month option to purch, not purchase, about 18-month option, yeah, to purchase the property while they determine long-term viability. Their ultimate goal is to create a, use the existing building as their community food center, which would include a grocery store, commercial kitchen, and biz, yeah, and business incubator. Let's see here, try to keep it brief. You're being asked to make a motion pursuant to Article 7 of the Zoning Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the disposition of 171 Park Street, 294 Lisbon Street, 308 Lisbon Street, and 324 Lisbon Street.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone in the staff, I mean, on the board, have any questions for staff? Okay, in that case, I would ask the presenters, Misty, if you would like to introduce yourselves and introduce your friends here and tell us what you guys want to do.
Great, thank you so much. My name is Misty Parker. I'm the Assistant Director of Economic and Community Development here with the city. And I have two representatives from LA Community Market here as well.
Yeah, my name is Moomina Isi.
Hi, Kirsten Walter, the St. Mary's Nutrition Center and advisor on the project.
Okay, Misty, do you want to make the presentation or who wants to make it?
Yeah, so I can start out just sort of with how we got here and what the request is in front of the Planning Board. And then I would let folks from the market to explain a little bit more about the business model and the process ahead for them so you can get an understanding of why the request has come into the city for this specific parcel. So as you are all aware, the Police Department is currently in the process of building out a new home at the Bates Mill Complex in Mill 7. At this time, it is anticipated that midway through next year, they will be relocated there. However, we also know that that timeline continues to get pushed out a little bit. The LA community, the, so the police, the current police station right now has not been identified as another potential reuse for that site by the city. There was a needs assessment that was conducted several years ago on the current condition of the property and determined that rehab for municipal use, especially public safety, was not an option. And so therefore, this property has been identified by the city administrator as something that could be eligible for disposition. The LA Community Market has been working in Lewiston for a couple of years now to find a site for their market. They also had previously been working on two different sites on a development project that fell through. So they had been pretty far down the road of designing and raising funds for those projects. And so they're starting from the beginning now and have been for the past year looking for a different site that would meet their requirements. That has what brought them to the Police Department's current location and knowing that the city did not have an identified reuse for it. So part of the request for an option would allow them to assess for themselves what the current condition of the building is and also what type of development they could do, whether that's rehab the existing building or build a new building. They also recognizing the location of it and, you know, goals that are laid out in the Comprehensive Plan as well as the Growing Our Tree Streets Transformation Plan, there's definitely a need and opportunity for housing. They are also acknowledged that they are not housing developers. Their expertise is in food. And so therefore, they have, they are currently working with two different development groups with experience in housing. They have not selected a development partner, to my knowledge, but I have, but have identified the interest in evaluating the feasibility of adding housing to this project as well as finding a development partner if it looks like that's a viable option to consider. So they're open to exploring that. The timeline, the option timeline would allow them to do this work if they determine that there is a financially viable path forward, to then begin securing financing for that project. It also gives them the flexibility so that if there is a delay in the Police Department relocating, that there's still time for them to be working through those hiccups as well. So would you guys like to talk a little bit more about the market?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to keep it brief and then let you ask a lot of questions as well. And to be clear, there are other members of the board here, so if there's something that you have a question and Moomina and I don't have a really good answer, we can always tap a friend and ask them to, to come up. But just to give you a little bit more background about the market and a sense of what it is. So we say it's, the name is a little bit misleading. So LA Community Market makes you think it is just a grocery, but the model has several components that are all based on feedback from Growing Our Tree Streets as well as the Local Foods Local Places Action Plan around identified community needs tied to food. And so there would be- And so there would be a low cost global market um that would be sourcing a lot of culturally preferred foods and working with local vendors and supporting local businesses in sourcing. But there would also be a a lot of kitchen space. So there would be kitchen incubation space to support small businesses. To your point, Shannon, like that startup capital is so hard, especially in the food industry. And we have a lot of existing immigrant communities as well as new arrivals who are just ready to go to start their businesses but need access to space. The Nutrition Center constantly gets requests for access to our kitchen, which can barely meet those needs. It it can't for commercial needs. And um, so having that um kitchen incubation, and we'll talk about the kind of programmatic pieces that would be tied to that too, but the physical space to do that as well as a a commercial community kitchen so that people, and Muminah can speak to this a lot more in a minute, so that people can use it, um, having a rented space for with a kitchen attached to it is a really high need in this community and is a great revenue stream. And then additionally, cold and dry storage for area farmers. And this is all based on a really robust feasibility study that was done after Local Foods Local Places Action Plan was formed in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty um to see what was feasible by talking to area farmers and businesses. So that's what makes up the the market are all of those elements and separate elements of the um Growing Our Tree Streets Plan and and the Local Foods Local Places Action Plan. But what's also unique about this is it is not a nonprofit. It is a cooperative. It's registered with the state as as of twenty twenty-two as a as a cooperative, which means it will be a taxable entity. It is a business. The Nutrition Center is not, that's not our wheelhouse. Our wheelhouse is community food. We understand the needs that this project is meeting, but we don't necess- we're not experts in building businesses. And so we partnered with the Cooperative Development Institute, which is an expert. They are the designated regional, like rural development center for the Northeast. And they have a lot of experience in food businesses, including co-ops. And so we have their expertise have had for the last couple of years in helping build this business to say, how can those revenue streams make a food center work? Because Sherri Blumenthal is here. She was part of the feasibility study. We studied not just the ones that worked, but a lot of the ones that didn't to really inform what a business model is that could work and could work in this community. And so that cooperative model is one of the things I'm most excited about because it is building in the opportunity for wealth creation, for ownership, um, at all different levels. So there's co-op members. You go to the store, you get to be a member, you get some benefits back. But there's businesses that are that is a membership level. There's workers who are members. Everyone has a say and also benefits from the the wealth that is generated. And when we looked at the properties, we originally were slated to be a part of choice and in DeWitt, so. Um, and this project was chosen for that because it is a really viable project and one that meets community needs that has been identified. One of the reasons DeWitt did not work is because there were just um barriers to ownership based on the HUD funding. And so property ownership is actually really critical, not just to the business model, it which is essential because one of the things that we have learned is, as you said, upfront capital. In a project like this, upfront upfront capital is real. The more we can lower that, the more, the better chance of this business being successful and sustainable. And so that's one really critical reason why ownership is important. But this board does not look like a lot of boards of businesses in this community. And this board is made up of many different communities who speak many different languages and have very diverse business and and life experiences. And to have legacy, to have ownership, to be able to, what what moved me the most is when one of, one of, early on, when one person just said, Hassan said, like, I want to be able to tell, walk by twenty years from now and tell my kids, like, I started that. And we, you know, that's a really important thing when we think about the the changing demographics of our community is really thinking for me around equity and who has access to ownership in our community, particularly historically disadvantaged members of our communities. And so I, there's a lot more to talk about, particularly details about the financing. I want to pass it to Muminah for a minute to talk about some of the community needs it's meeting. Um, and then I can go back and explain a pretty, our financing stack and the things that are already in place. So you have a sense of like, this is a really solid project and it's and it has legs. It has multiple years of research and getting things in place. We just need a place. And so that's what this is about. And this I is an ideal location for the market, and we'll talk more about that.
Hi.
And Muminah's not going to talk as fast as I do, because I talk fast when I'm nervous.
And I lost my words when I'm nervous, so bear with me. So I've been living in this community over twenty years, working at the Nutrition Center also over twenty years, raised three children, young ones in college. It was my dream to start my own business. And this community food center is a is a place I can share with my recipes. I can start my own business, have a kitchen like the community can come together and cook, especially the holidays, the Ramadan, and World Refugee Days, we struggling to find a space to community come together and cook together. And also this space will provide a event center when people is can have their wedding of horrible price. And we're gonna add a not only culturally food, but also cafeteria when it's walkable business for downtown, the people can come and share with our recipe. We like, not only me, but I have, we are around twenty people who come from different backgrounds and culture, and they want to share their grammar recipes. I want to like the city of Lewiston employees to walk there and grab some busa and or grab hot meal or maybe homeless person who have couple of dollars can afford to buy a soup, cup of soup. And also what are our community struggling is the halal food. We have so many halal meats in Lisbon Street, but they don't provide any uh fresh food, uh meat. It's all frozen. I drive all the way to Boston to buy my halal meat. So not only that, but our farmers, who local farmers, they only have two days, Sunday and Tuesday market the whole year. It's like the summertime. We want them to sell their uh crabs in the wintertime also, make frozen food. We have so much dreams, so we wanted the city to consider to like let us, our dreams come true, not only me, but generation. My daughter is with me tonight here and she saw me like three years talking about opening this business. It was my dream. I asked her, my English is not perfect. Would you present to me behalf of me? And she said, no, mommy, you can do it. I'm gonna sit there and watch you.
You're doing a great job.
Yes, so thank you.
Thank you, Muminah. I will keep it short to just add a few more pieces and then your questions will bring up the rest of it. But um, you know, one of the things, in addition to what Muminah said about halal foods, a lot of our families from Angola and Congo drive, there are halal markets in in Lewiston, but there are not a lot of uh markets that serve the Central African communities. And so they're driving to Portland to and giving business to Portland businesses, which is great, but why not have it here? And so um and being able to source some of those foods, um, you know, both local crops that are grown by immigrant refugee farmers, but also being able to source foods and um that people want. And uh it's kind of a side note, but you know, the Nutrition Center runs a food pantry and we, um, Muminah and Elena, who are both here, are part of our staff and and know the needs of their communities. And and that is part of what has informed the design of the market is over the years, be able to see what the needs are. But we just had our Thanksgiving distribution. We gave food out to over five hundred families. And I just want you to close your eyes and imagine a box of food going out for Thanksgiving. There's no turkey because it's, we can't do five hundred turkeys, but all the other things. And so what you would have seen is some families choosing, you know, to fill their boxes, they get to shop. So they fill their boxes with all the vegetables and foods that they want for sides. Some folks who like picking their cranberry, their jar of cranberry, other people are getting fresh tomatoes. And some people are getting a gift card to be able to go buy their own turkey. And other people are choosing a huge piece of frozen salted fish to take home and cook. And so you had people like walking out with boxes on their head with a huge fishtail sticking out. And that's for me, when you say like culturally preferred foods, like that that what what is familiar and what makes it feel like home is different for different families. And this market, because it will be run and directed and owned by members of these communities, will really be meeting those needs in a way that even um organizations like ours that have staff who know those needs can't meet. But I think the other piece we wanted to be really clear about is this location. You know, there there are, to the conversation earlier, there are a lot of larger commercial spaces in Lewiston. There are almost none in the downtown that can meet an an envelope of twelve to fourteen, fifteen thousand square feet. That can be walkable to the Tree Streets neighborhood, which is critical. We have looked at other sites, but we just kept being like, would you walk there in the middle of February and walk back with your groceries? But also it's at the Southern Gateway. And so the opportunity to have employees of the city and downtown businesses be shopping there and and buying um prepared meals um or using the kitchen um for events and, you know, or for their own businesses, but also just the traffic that comes through on Lisbon Street. And we we want to activate that end of the um of Lisbon Street and the gateway, but it also at that end of the park. And how beautiful it would be to have all this happening with DeWitt on Park Street and all the activation on that side of the park then be complemented by a lot of community activity at the bottom of the park, right across from the basketball court and the skate park. When we think about the options there, right now, we need an option because there are a lot of possibilities on the table. And the market would be the anchor. But looking at additional housing is absolutely on the table as well as we know that the only other real interest in that park and that space came from um decades long interest in having a community center. Like, could we make the financing work to have that also co- located there? When that was brought up, I know Catherine was like, that would be amazing, like, and and Elena, you're like, if we, if people could like drop their kids off for an afternoon program and be able to go work in their kitchen or be able to go shopping, you wouldn't that be amazing? So that you that we, because this is driven by community members and area businesses, farmers, there's just a real understanding of how they're could be complementary needs met in the space. And then you, it's great to have a good vision, but you need to have a good plan. You need to have a good performer and business model. We, because we were originally part of choice, this whole project had to kind of go backwards. A lot of community food centers would start with the community vision, which we did, have community members come around and form the board, then go get, you know, test the the business model, go find financing. We basically had to find, secure financing without a fully formed business plan because we wanted that business plan to be formed by the the board. I'm an advisor. I'm not on the board. I'm not a decision maker. It is a board of community members and businesses that are running this. So we had to move quickly. And it is a testament to the strength of this business model that we were able to secure, we're almost near five million dollars in financing and grants for this project. Um, and some of who've been very patient because we've had to be delayed and who said, we are still with you. You tell us when you have your space, we are still with you. And so that includes the Cooperative Fund of the Northeast, which they have backing also with CEI and the Fair Food Fund for two point six million dollars. And then Sewell Foundation for a two million dollar loan for upfront capital um or purchase price as well as two two um larger grants. And so including a USDA grant that that's, the Nutrition Center was able to secure and subcontract half of that to support this. And I'm not saying that to give us credit, but that's probably why we got the grant is because this project is so exciting. And and then we had already been, um, Mascoma Bank had set aside new market tax credits this year because we thought we would be constructing on 104 Park. That didn't happen. And so they are actively just waiting for the decisions about this to be able to line us up for the next cycle. So we are in a really strong position. And as soon as we have a location, that's when you can actually do the real fundraising and financing work. So I'll I'll stop there. I know we've shared a lot, but um we're, I'm sure there's a lot of questions and we can um bring other points.
This sounds very, very uh exciting, very interesting. And it, your your concept, or at least the how I'm thinking of it is, I was in Portugal two years ago and we were in this large market. And it was open air, part of it, and some of it was in a building. And there were stalls and there were, um, there was a butcher and there was uh flowers and there were uh fruits and vegetables. And it was, you know, we were there in January, so it was winter. I mean, not, it's not like our winter, but. But, you know, it would be fantastic to be able to go to a farmer's market inside where we could buy the fresh vegetables and and everything or buy pre-cooked meals and stuff. I think it would be fa- fabulous. Josh.
I I was actually involved in some of the Local Foods Local Places uh planning sessions. And um, one of the things that that I just want to point out is that the supports that you provide by allowing a facility that that you can have food processing in, um, it basically extends uh to our our local agriculture as well. So in the cases where we can get local foods that are shelf stable or frozen, that are produced by local local farmers, you know, that also strengthens that portion of it and allows folks to expand what they're actually growing. And so like, that's, I think that's a, that's a really neat aspect. And I got to say that I absolutely love the the concept of it being a cooperative. And it really, the only thing that's, I think, stronger than than a union is a co-op because you actually own it.
Shannon.
Thank you. Um, it is really exciting. And uh I'll start first by what I think is the actual request in front of us, which is feedback on the option. I think we even provided with a motion. Um, I fully support that. We, I've been on this board, I don't know, a couple of years. And and uh, I think oftentimes we sit around this space and say like, that exists over there. Why doesn't anybody want that one? And it is uncommon for us to watch um prior uses be set aside and spaces sit empty, dilapidated, neglecting, leading to blight and kind of a downward economic spiral where we sit around and just literally pray that someone will see the potential in a building that's vacant and ugly and what it could be. And I believe you are forecasting your vision before it's even vacant on properties we hadn't even considered. And what an exciting position for the city to be in and a rare one. And so I fully support the eighteen month option. God willing, the Police Department gets out in that timeframe because of the way things move. So that, I mean, the timeframe doesn't, I don't even blink at that, given the actual pace of construction and moving for our existing tenants of the Police Department, let alone your process. And we do have enough other spaces that people could explore. I also, um, so I fully support this. And I don't know if we want to do a straw poll before we make a motion, but I'm pretty excited. The second piece is, I just to kind of share a little bit more about what Josh is saying. In my day job, we also support parts of the Local Food Local Places Plan and my engagement in that has been really deep. And it, from an economic standpoint, we are already a community that outsources a lot of our local economy because people who work here and make good salaries leave and spend their money in their hometowns. And that is one of the lots in life that this community needs to continue to change. The opportunity to ensure that people who do live here aren't leaving to spend their money in another community simply because we haven't provided them the opportunity to invest those dollars in the local economy is just low hanging fruit. And um, and I can say that I've seen not only the potential, some of the, what I would say, smaller very real life economic impacts, but very small scale economic impacts of smaller scale farms, one acres, five acres, connecting with a local forty seat restaurant to make sure that something's available. Not only is that important and huge, but realistically, we are never going to get to institutional buying that transforms our local economy without cold and dry storage. And that's the opportunity to have economic impact of scale when all of a sudden you get healthcare and secondary education institutions gladly buying local produce, even though it's December and nothing's growing. Um, and that doesn't happen without storage and processing. And it is that missing link in our local infrastructure, economic infrastructure and industrial infrastructure that we're missing. And this is an exciting opportunity to meet that need. And so the impact is not just that, which, Muminah, you did a wonderful job bringing me to tears and sharing tonight. But the impact goes far beyond that and can be felt in in our tax coffers and um and in the way in which we really maximize our local economy and local residential and business experience. And so I'm very supportive.
Anyone else? Amy.
Love everything about it. I think the location's fantastic, that that corner of the park, it just kind of feels depressing down there, especially with the police station and the cars coming and going. So I think that the kind of vibrancy that it will bring to this corner is huge. I also, um, you know, recently had a a great experience working with another immigrant led co-op that put in a daycare in a building that I own. And I was so impressed with the collaboration that happened between the Cooperative Development Institute. And I was so impressed with the collaboration that happened between the Cooperative Development Institute, Sewell, like, all the funders and all the technical support that sort of wrapped their arms around it because it does bring you to tears to think about how awesome this would be. But it's just a dream without that kind of support. And so the fact that you guys have worked so hard and lined up all this real, you know, the reality that's going to make it all happen, and just the networking of having all those different funders and organizations understanding the vision. I think that, that this will have just a really, really far-reaching impact, even beyond what you do on this little acre that really needs you. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions from the board? Michael?
Although I believe I understand the concept, I'd like you to elaborate a little bit more on the line that refers to a twelve-million-dollar in grocery leakage back into the community.
Yeah, so that was part of the feasibility work. And I just understanding that right now, there's so many, there's, like, to Shannon's point, so many people who live here or work here don't shop here. And so the, the more that, you know, we always know that local dollars get multiplied, right? And so the more that those, you know, we can capture people buying their food here versus elsewhere, then the more we can circle those dollars back in. So that's a big part of, when we think about the economic impact, is that there's just a lot of dollars going outside of our community that could be purchasing food here, as well as supporting the farmers who are growing up.
And are you referring to the, the end-use of the consumer or maybe the restaurant, the intermediary?
That is a good question, and I would have to see if Sherry has an answer or Becky, but, yeah.
I think, I think it was grocery, consumer.
So for the recording, looking at consumer and not necessarily restaurant and other.
Because I do find it a little hard to believe that people travel outside the community to do their grocery shopping.
Oh, like, six thousand people actively do it, particularly because some of the products are not available.
I'm one of those people.
People who are traveling to Market Basket are excited that Costco just opened.
You, you brought up something that's been on my mind all evening, and that's Market Basket. We could use one, but I still find it hard to believe that many people are making the travel just for groceries.
Well, just going to Auburn, just going to the Shaws or the Walmart or the Target, that's in Auburn, right? It's not in Lewiston. So although we have two groceries here, we're just, if we're thinking just.
No problem. Before I speak.
So my name is Catherine. I'm, I'm the president of the LACM.
Sorry, for this to be useful and for the chair to accept what is not a public comment, period. I think you should get tagged in by one of your friends, take a seat at the front so that your remarks can be heard. Sorry. I want you to be able to speak in a way that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. My name is Catherine Piper. I'm the president of the Board of the LACM. I'm also a small business owner, five-pillars butchery. We're anticipating breaking ground in the spring to construct Maine's first exclusively halal and Muslim-owned slaughter and processing facility. And our goal is to provide meat to the LACM. And so just to speak on your question, Michael, based on USDA statistics, Americans consume over two hundred pounds of meat per year. And so when we're considering the twenty thousand Muslim, only Muslim, Mainers, and then however many you have, I believe it's probably over ten thousand in Lewiston alone, you're looking in the millions of pounds of meat consumed every single year. And if people are not purchasing their meat locally and they're having to travel to Portland or they're having to travel to Boston to get that meat.
On an individual level?
Absolutely.
I wasn't thinking it was on an individual level, but.
So if you, but if you consider the two hundred pounds of meat and then to multiply that by the population of, of only the Muslim community, you're looking at millions of pounds of meat consumed. Our facility is only going to be able to serve five percent of the seven percent of the immigrant and first-generation community here in Maine. And so I just want to bring those statistics to your question to show you how much money is actually being lost within this community because people cannot buy fresh, locally-produced meat in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Josh?
And the point I was going to make is, you know, I, I look at the models like Boba, right? And Boba will travel to Boston, Portland or Boston to source a particular product, right? We have a wealth of cultural foods in our community. And if you can access the ingredients in order to, to open, for instance, a restaurant or have like a takeout, any of those types of things. It's the same thing with a lot of the folks in, in our established Chinese communities. You know, they'll travel far distances in order to find the products that they're looking for. If you can grow it locally and store it and have it accessible, figure out opening up so many different options for sustainable businesses within our community that are supported by the people who already live here, so.
Just one, like, finer point on that. We know many local farmers, immigrant farmers, who are, you, you're growing in the Lewiston Auburn area or right around it, who don't have storage. So they're storing like Afrin corn in their freezer in their apartment and then shipping it. Like, you know, those are the things where we're like, and, and I agree, Shannon, we do need significant processing and, and just significant processing and storage space. This is only a small piece of that. It's really like a test run. So that, because studies around having a, a larger food hub have said we, we don't actually quite have the demand yet or need. So this was built on saying, "How do we get people to get their, that step up?" So that then they can say, "I'm going to expand," and actually, your storage here is not going to be big enough for me. Enough of those, then they either have the, the market and the business establish that they can do it on their own or they can, or we could, you know, expand out. Or you don't need to be downtown to have a large hub, but you do need to be downtown to have this mixed use. And a huge part of the model is actually having that shared space. So you, you build one big, you know, access to walk-in cold storage that's used for a grocery store, that's used for, for the kitchen and is used for the storage. You save a lot of money versus having three separate, you know, walk-ins to do that. And same with the kitchen space. So I think that those are, you know, important parts of when we think about the model, is having, you know, the revenue come back in, but also meeting the needs so people can kind of start small. And then if they want to scale up, they're, they're going to go, they might go somewhere else and start something even better. They will meet those larger needs. And we are building in the programmatic support, already, already having really in-depth conversations with CEI around workforce development, as well as area schools for the culinary parts.
Right. Roger?
Appears to me that this is going to be competing with the farmer's market.
Nope. So we've got, the Nutrition Center helped found the farmer's market. We're huge supporters of it. And Sherry has been coordinating it for almost fifteen years. So this is, the farmer's market will continue to thrive and be the place that you go to during the summer and hopefully at some point year-round. But this is, think of it as like a, a global market where you would walk in and be able to get the things. Any one of us could walk in and get some of the things we want for our families to be able to go cook at home. So it will have a lot of shelf-stable items, prepared foods, you know, frozen and refrigerated items. But it will be creating additional markets for those very farmers. So those farmers can say, "I want to sell this stuff not only on, on, on Sunday or on Tuesday, but I want to have that, those products on the market throughout the weekend." There are, Ben is one of those farmers here who owns Jerp Creek Farm, as well as Andy Valley Cooperative, is a, a joint LLC, who's excited to have that expanded market.
Can I comment on that as well? If you look at other communities, let's take, for example, Belfast. They have a Belfast co-op, and then they have an indoor farmer's market that's on Saturdays. And then every Friday, they have an outdoor farmer's market. And then through the winter, it's moved into a local space where they can be indoors. So they have all three locally-produced markets in just the small area of Belfast. That's one piece. There was something else that I wanted to say, too.
We'll be around when it comes back.
We'll, we'll get into detail. Right now, we're just looking for your option to, to purchase the lot. So, I mean, we'll get into details when you start getting, ready to build.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I did remember it. The other piece is that having a, a, a larger market for farmers who are selling in the farmer's market, some of them are very well-established, and they're in multiple farmer's markets around the state. So it gives them an opportunity to be in a more established market, which makes more space for new and upcoming farmers who are smaller, who are growing, who don't have the opportunity to be in the local farmer's markets because all the spaces are filled already.
Lee?
Sure. Well, one, thank you again, and I would just echo my colleagues' support here across the board. You started to allude to this, so I just wanted to mention it. I function in an education space day in and day out, so I just see the opportunity here for the schools locally, even the YWCA and other such organizations with regards to generations and future and cooking, thinking about the incubator space. And then I may be thinking way too futuristically here, but the location is phenomenal, to say the least. And then thinking about, is it Country Kitchen, fully, who's right there? So in terms of just understanding flow and traffic and massive storage, the ability to learn from one another could be immense, again, thinking in the future. So, yeah, just kudos and thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, super excited for this. As someone who, who drives long distances for some, some food products that I care about, really looking forward to it. What I, what I'm wondering about is, it seems like you, you mentioned housing in here, sort of something that's sort of like thrown in at the last moment.
That's really not, we're, we're just looking at their option right now.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, and I'm going to, I'm going to connect it. I'm going to connect it. I'm going to connect it. I'm going to connect it.
Okay.
And I guess, I was just curious if you could clarify, like, is this something that you're looking for to make this site viable? Or, or do you think it can be viable without it? Because I, I founded co-ops before, and, and, you know, often it's sort of this, this joy of having all these things that we want to do. And it makes things complicated and it, you know, adds resiliency because you have more pathways for raising funds, for gaining interest, but it also makes it more challenging because you have more things to manage. So I'm just wondering, how, how do you see housing fit in? Is this just a very exploratory thing right now? Or is this, is this something that you'd like to actually see as part of this when we give you the option?
Yeah, and, and we do want it to be a wide-open option for all the reasons. But I think that, a couple of reasons. One is that a lot of the board members live downtown, and so they know the need for quality housing. And so would be excited if we could leverage, you know, site ownership and development of the site to meet multiple community needs. And, and want to hear from community members and community leaders about highest and best use of the space. And then also match that with financial realities. It's actually a lot harder to do housing, right? Housing financing right now in this climate is nearly impossible. But we have, we, you know, we wanted to be able to say, okay, you know, if, if that building is, is savable, then let's start with that and we can phase it out. If it is not and it has to be demolished, then it's a new, new construction. And those are completely different financial pathways and development pathways. And we won't know until we're able to fully assess the property. But we, those conversations that we, you have engaged, we have two really solid development partners who have said like, "We're in if it makes sense." And, and that's LB Developers, who Carl Lacari was involved with Sophia's House, as well as other products, projects here and Dan Black. So they know this community and know housing. And then Brian Eng and Cara, Cara Wilber, who are also really good at developing housing and, and thinking about kind of all the different models, from co-op to market to, to mix, to, to income-restricted. And so we have, the LACM wants to be clear, we are not housing developers and nor would LACM as its own board be able to fully develop the site with other uses. Like, that, that's not the expertise, but that if there is a great fit for it to meet more needs in the community, then LACM would be responsible for its part. And then with development partners who know a lot more than we do, be able to really do the full development. So we, we wanted to, with the option, just be able to really explore it and say, "How does it fit in with all of the other, you know, comprehensive plan, other, other plans and say, what's the best use?"
So just one follow-up question for staff. Can we?
Yeah.
Given some of the other sites that have passed by the board where, you know, life is uncertain. We don't know what will happen in the future. Is there a way that we can recommend a longer option period? Is there any harm in that? It's just something I think about.
Eighteen months would give us, and this, there is a very large parcel in, I'm not staff, so I'm sorry. There's a very large parcel, basically number five, that's had a couple of options. And at the end of each option, it comes in front of us for renewal. So there is no harm in having eighteen months. It's not restrictive or kind of dead in the water from that day.
Awesome. Right. Correct. Is that, is that correct? Yeah, so, so, I mean, I, I think they're asking for eighteen months. I think eighteen months is what we should give them at this time. And then if, if things need to be, you know, Misty will lead them to, back to us if, if they need an extension to, to the option. I mean, yes, Josh, and then Michael.
The, the one thing I just want to point out real quick to, and I don't know if you, if anybody had thought about this, but, but ultimately, the demographics of our schools are changing, right? And in that space, a lot of times, the foods aren't culturally appropriate always. And so there's an increased food waste in that space. And, and also, there's less access to fresh and healthy local foods. And so like, I'm just wondering, was there any considerations as far as like?
This isn't part of, of what we're talking about. You're talking about something that, that is eighteen months, yeah.
Grab their numbers and follow up.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I understand a lot of these questions, but this isn't really what we're talking about right now. We're just talking to give them the option to buy this property, you know, and then they'll have to come before us and before the city council to, to get the permissions to do whatever the heck they want to do. So, I mean, at that time, we can start asking all of these housing questions and, and, you know, connecting with the schools to have the appropriate food. And so, Michael?
I, I think it's appropriate to have all the questions that we've heard tonight. We're talking about an eighteen-month window, and that's part of the reason I'm going to support this, is because it's an eighteen-month window. We don't want to lock it up for longer. We, we've seen sort of, those sort of things in the town in the past, whether it's Bates Mill or other places. And I'm glad I heard the phrase, which went through my mind a few times this evening, highest and best use. Because that's, that's my concern. Is this project going to not take off without housing? Maybe not. Other considerations are, and I hope you get full access to the building because I've been in on the discussions on the salvageability of the building, and I don't believe it is salvageable. I think the best option is to tear it down and start from scratch because you'll be dealing with problems with that building for the entirety of anything that goes in there.
Yeah, I agree. The building is, is.
We read the report and we are aware, and we just want to be able to, you know, have, have a second look so that we're thinking about, you know, whenever you can, we use something, you do, but.
Yeah, sometimes you can't.
And Josh, talk to Muminia after because she helped get a couple of items into the school menu recently.
I will entertain a motion, please.
I'm going to make one.
Good.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article Seven, Section four H of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for the disposition of 171 Park Street, 294 Lisbon Street, 308 Lisbon Street, and 324 Lisbon Street. Period.
Do I have a second? Michael's second. Okay, any further discussion? All right, Roger Dupree.
Yep.
Joshua Nagine.
Yes.
Michael Markot.
Yes.
Shannon Cox.
Yes.
Amy Smith.
Yes.
Alexander Pine.
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Go for it, guys. Good luck. And hopefully, you know, we'll see you in, before us, before the eighteen months.
Here's hoping for the police department.
Yes, and let's hope to get out of there as soon as possible. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sounds like an exciting project. Okay, at this time, it is Joshua Nagine's last meeting with the planning board this evening. So I would like to thank him for his service and wish him luck on the city council.
Thank you and good luck.
I greatly appreciate that. I just want to say that the, you know, the integrity and the, and the veracity of the individuals that serve on this, on this board, absolutely outstanding. I've really enjoyed my time here, and I was actually considering leaving the board while I was running for council because it became political. And I didn't want anything to push back on you folks because the, the truth is, you're the, you're the most city-minded and least partisan group of people that I've ever worked with. Even you, Mike.
Thank you, thank you, and.
You wait, your taxes haven't answered yet.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, at the reading of the minutes, motion to.
Wait, sorry.
What?
Is there space for other business on this?
Is there space for other business on this agenda before reading of the minutes?
Yes, of course. There's always, there's always space.
I asked a question via email, and I'm wondering if you can state it clearly and maybe even answer any follow-up questions today on the record for all of us about the process that happens in January. So with much gratitude to Josh and his departure and our incoming, our outgoing chair's departure, there are a number of things that...
Well, I may not be departing.
Well, so this is the point, right, is like...
Well, I mean, I may be departing as chair, but I may, I had a chat with Kathy Monteau. Well, Shelley sent us some information. And then I had a chat with Shelley, with Kathy Monteau. I thought I was termed out. I am not. Apparently, with the new city charter, I could do another two, three-year term, another two, three-year terms.
So, and...
Which I will not do too, but...
And we have a mayor of whom we don't know who that is yet. And will be decided tomorrow. And most of us serve at the pleasure of the mayor by appointment.
Yeah, but there are 32 empty slots on boards.
Super cool. Can I just, I'm just asking for Shelley to give me a process covering?
Yep.
It's really nice to hear about your flexibility, freedom, and future plans. The rest of us might need to make some as well.
Absolutely.
And so, can you please provide clarity to the next steps and how the mayoral appointing period goes, what anyone on this board needs to do to be reappointed or reapply if that is necessary? Because that's a step that occasionally gets skipped in the bigger tracking of things, and we don't do it. Yes. Because we're busy. So what's next steps look like? And when we show up to our next meeting, procedurally, what things need to happen at the front end of the meeting to allow us to act as a board that day?
Okay. I am going to be responding to your email. I haven't pulled all the information together yet, which is why I haven't done so. The applications for reappointment are due the 26th of December. That email went out with instructions for how to do that. That is salient for Alex, Christine, and Lucy, and for no one else on the board at this time.
Sweet.
So also clarification was sent to Lucy and Christine that they are not termed out. The charter changes that were made in the last couple of years, and I don't remember what year they were made, state that you can serve up to three full terms. So if you ever served a partial term, it doesn't count. So in both of their cases, I believe they have only served one full term because they had served some partial terms and then been reappointed as a different, you know, associate versus regular member, so forth and so. So that's clarification on that. Everybody's terms that are up are up on the 9th, which means they can serve on the January 8th planning board meeting and also attend the joint workshop with the city council and finance committee on LCIP on the 9th. So it's really the January 22nd meeting that, at that point, we may or may not have seats filled. Hopefully, we do. The council's being sworn in on the 2nd, so their first real meeting will be the 9th, where they can take action on appointments. So hopefully, they will have appointments from the mayor available for them to take action on, on the 9th. But we don't know yet if they will have those in hand. So I will look up the information on our positions on the board and what the election process and timeline is for that, and make sure I have that sent out well before the 8th, if there is a change that happens on the 8th or whether it, you know, when exactly that happens, so.
So is it the mayor that appoints and city council has to approve? Is that the new?
Yes. Yeah, that's the new process.
Yeah, because that was the brouhaha last time. Okay. Let's hope we don't have the same.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So is there, are any of us definitely still on the planning board after this?
Yes. Yes. So the only, the only people who need to reapply would be Alex, Christine, and Lucy. The rest of you, you don't term out for another year, two years. It depends on your appointment. I can get you that date, but it's, you're on for at least another year.
And I think one of the questions that I had specifically was the role about current associate members and whether there was anything procedurally or fits at the will of the mayor for which they become full-voting members.
They have to apply.
Seniority, yada, yada, yada.
So it's, it's kind of like separate membership on the board. So if you're an associate and you want to be a full member, you should apply to be appointed as a full member.
Regardless of your term date.
Absolutely, regardless. So that's some of what had happened, let's say with Lucy, for example, where at one point she had been an associate member, and then she was reappointed to a full member. She didn't serve a full term as associate member, so that doesn't count towards the three terms, if you see what I mean.
It's kind of a lifetime membership model?
I don't, at this point, that's, you know. So, yeah, so, you know.
That's helpful.
So...
So we're all coming on the 8th.
So, yeah, we're all coming, except Josh. Except Josh. And so his, his spot has to be filled. Somebody new has to apply for his spot. Unless Lee wants to apply or Alex wants to apply for full board member, then you could be applying for, well, I know Christine said she didn't want to apply, reapply. So, so there are at least two full, full board members that are vacant. So, Michael, you had to hand up.
What's the first council meeting date?
I believe it's the 9th after your workshop. Yep.
And that will be with the new council.
When is the city council first?
And new mayor.
Which means any vacancies on the planning board could not possibly have been filled by then, because it requires council approval.
Correct, but our, my, our terms don't expire until the 9th.
So you'll have the one vacancy, which is Josh's.
Which will be Josh.
But Christine, Lucy, and Alex can still serve through the 9th.
And in her emails, Christine does plan on doing at least that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. She said she was going to be here.
We'll just be down Josh that night.
But it'll be just Josh, so.
Is there one more city council meeting after that before our next meeting? Or will we have a period of vacancy?
I would think so. No, I think it, I think there probably would. If it's the 9th...
Be the 23rd?
Then the 23rd.
I believe there is, but we, I need to find a 24 calendar.
That would mean, no, they would meet after us.
Yeah, because they meet after.
Yeah, so...
They should prob, they would, I believe that they're meeting on the 23rd, yes.
Put it on their first meeting on the 9th.
That would be...
So it, it may be that you're meeting on January 22nd. It's possible that you won't have new, new seats filled by then.
Right.
Which happened two years ago.
Yeah. Sorry, Josh. You're going away.
You're going away. Let me talk.
Does our bylaws dictate quorum based on, so like, let's say we get to the second meeting in January and appointments haven't been made, and we have two vacant seats, and our new associate members are not yet members in case they do apply? Is our quorum based on the overall number of seats and not the number of seats that are filled?
Correct.
Overall number? Awesome. Thank you. So we won't have a quorum issue.
So just, just while we're having this discussion, one, I think continuity is pretty important. We don't have a lot of continuity coming into the council. And so I think the planning board's done some fantastic work in the past couple of years, and I think that continuity would be good to continue, if possible. And also, as, as, I don't know if it was Lucy or Shannon who mentioned it, but there's 34 empty seats on boards and commission, in committees. So like, if you can all reach out to your friends, suggest that maybe they might want to serve, because we need people to fill these seats in order to run the city.
Is that a plea for people to stay on this board and not go steal one of those other committee seats?
What about overextending ourselves?
No. You can go ahead and do that. You just need to stay on this board. Overextend yourself like crazy. That's...
I just want to make a point of clarification. So Article 7, which is the planning board article, states a quorum necessary to conduct an official meeting of the planning board shall consist of at least four members. So it doesn't sound like it's related to how many seats are filled or not.
That's great. For full credit, Mike said that in my ear long before you read it, so he knew.
Yep.
Full credit. Where it's deserved.
Okay. Motion to adopt the minutes of November 27.
So moved.
Yep.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Aye.
Okay.
There we go.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
In touch. That we will.
Indeed.
I know. We'll meet with you at the joint meeting and be like, we thought you were gone.
Oh, right. You're here that way.
I don't want to cover Cox. I'm going to talk.
It's cool. I'm ready. Fair enough. I can expect it.
This is bittersweet. I really like this word.
You're going to keep doing this work, so don't be bitter anything about it. Just be sweet. You'll get it done. When we send you, you should vote on it. Prove it, okay? That's what your job is now. Good luck.
Don't worry. I'll give you a...
Yeah, I figured. Can I, can we do my, honestly, this is my first minute all day to answer your text from 6:30 this morning.